Want to call to order the council meeting of January 14th, 2019. Please call the roll.
Rich Barlock. Kate Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattonback.
Here.
Alida Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Ewing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolf.
Here.
Beth Palmer.
Here.
Kevin Crane.
Here.
Chief Wallace. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Bloom.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the minutes from our last meeting in December. There were some small changes which were circulated to all council members today. Are there any further changes to those minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is our finance report for November 2018.
The UARN report has been included in your packet. Just want to summarize some of the items from the month of November. The earnings tax collections for the month totaled just a little less than $100,000. This was very similar to November 2017's amount. And so the collection so far year-to-date is $2,300,000. Now that's about 84 percent of the collections. Obviously, we are not going to hit the target which was $2750,000. The village did receive local government funds in the amount of $5,100 for a total of almost $60,000 in local government funds. Revenue for the month of November totaled just a little over $200,000. And that brought our total year-to-date in revenue of $4.5 million. Our overall estimate for the general fund for 2018 was $4,780,000. On the expense side, the expenses for the month of November totaled a little over $408,000. For a year-to-date, total of $4.1 million. Our budget for 2018 was $5.1 million. So as of the end of November, we had spent almost 80 percent of the budget. The village ended the month of November with an unencumbered general fund balance of $6 million. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the man? If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Then the first committee is the law committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I am giving the report as a member of the committee because the chair could not be here tonight. This is the second reading of ordinance 2018-13, "Amending the Zoning Code and Regulation of Accessory Structures." In early 2017, the planning commission began reviewing several sections of the zoning code to better clarify the intent or to recommend changes to bring the codes up to today's standards. On October 8th, 2018, at the recommendation of the BZA and the planning commission, which I will use the terms interchangeably, it's the same board, and the law committee, the village council approved a six-month moratorium related to the construction of certain accessory structures over 200 square feet. An updated draft accessory structure ordinance, which is the ordinance, the original ordinance 2018-13, was presented to council on November 12th. Council then voted to refer the draft ordinance to the planning commission for their consideration and input. On December 3rd, 2018, the planning commission recommended approval of some of the changes to the village code, zoning, village zoning code, which resulted in ordinance 2018-13. The village council held its first reading at its regular meeting of December 10th. Council then requested that the ordinance be reviewed by the law committee, which the law committee did so at, on December 13th. The law committee recommended that ordinance 2018-13 be approved as shown in the attached red line edits which you all have before you. And I am going to go through these edits which you have before you, but so that they can be on the record. So, the red line changes include: One, removing the third and fifth whereas from the ordinance. Two, moving the definitions to the end of the section, including the open-to-the-sky language, the definition of floor area, and the definition of detached garage. And added an aggregate, added a limit on the aggregate area of enclosed structures. Before you, the ordinance before you removes nine and 10 from section 15412, referencing whether accessory structures can be used as a dwelling or part of a home business. And also removes language limiting the time period to seven days for tents and other temporary structures. However, I have been notified that next month, I believe it is 15412, section nine, is coming back in. So, we have that to look forward to. Number four, we added numbers eight, nine, and 10 to section 15412, stating accessory structure must meet the height limitations in 15451. No more than one detached garage may be located on a single lot, and detached car ports are not permitted more than six feet from the principal structure. Number five, we added number 13 to section 15412, stating accessory structures may only be used in a manner consistent with and incidental and subordinate to the principal use on the property. Six, we added the phrase, "Or that is connected to the principal structure by a distance greater than six feet in length," to section 15412, section B3. Number seven, we added the phrase, "And be similar to, although not exactly the same as," and removed the language restricting the material in sections 154, 121, B3B. Eight, we removed the phrase, "All siding and exterior walls must be residential in character and reference structures that are non-residential in appearance." Number nine, we removed D and E from section 154, 121, B3, limiting roof lines and roofing material to be similar to that on the principal structure and prohibiting flat roofs. Number 10, we removed section 154, 121, B3H, which states that accessory structures should appear consistent with similar buildings in the immediate area and shall reflect a consistent suburban aesthetic and prohibiting accessory structures that are rural agricultural, commercial, or industrial in character. And the reason was that the language is incorporated elsewhere in the code. Number 11, we removed section 154, 121, B4, and 5, referencing car ports and accessory structures used as dwellings. 12, reference definition of height measurement in section 15451A1. Okay. And we were scheduled for a public hearing today.
So, that concludes the second reading of the proposed ordinance. I would now like to open the public hearing relating to this particular ordinance. And any resident is welcome to come forward. The public hearing is opening at 6:39. So, anyone is welcome to come forward to talk about the proposed ordinance. Just state your name and address and...
My name is Beth Hammagron. I'm from 8435 Lynn Haven Drive. And I had a few questions of some changes that had gone on from the last reading. The one being that avoiding large expanses of a single material, it's now listed for windows, other architectural features, or landscaping shall be used. And I was a little concerned about landscaping. Would that be included when someone presents their plans? And how would that be enforced if landscaping is the way that they're going to change up the look of a structure? Nowhere did I see anything listed about drainage, gutters, downspouts, and that. I don't know if that's included in a different section of the ordinance or what. Also, it has at one point, "Foundation slab or other such support." So, can a structure have just a mud interior, gravel interior, or does it have to have a slab or some sort of foundation? And then, the combination of accessory structures on the property and how much it could take up of the property. And I didn't know, when someone adds like a three-season room onto their house, is that an accessory structure or is that considered a portion of the house? And how would that combine in with things? Those were my questions.
I can probably answer the first. And then, I wrote down the second, and I'm sure that maybe Kevin can help with the second. And some of them actually have, are planning commission questions. But I'm on the law committee. So, when we went through the recommendations that were given to us from the planning commission, I think that they seemed very rigid. And the purpose of, what the planning commission wanted, they wanted a little rigidity because they wanted some direction, like we want kind of a list of what we're allowed to do. But some of the things that they wanted seemed extremely rigid, given the diverse types of architecture that we have in Amberly Village. So, the structure that, you know, the requirement that there'll be two windows, or that if the house is made out of this material, your accessory structure has to be the exact same material, that didn't seem to kind of be what we were looking for in Amberly. I mean, we, if you have to go before the planning commission, they can specify that you need to have landscape features so that you don't end up with a large expanse of concrete wall or brick wall or something ugly, which was the purpose of breaking it up with windows or shutters or something like that. I'm not sure if that answers completely your question.
Let me just add one thing. I mean, the approval of this is, in this case, is done under basically conditional use. And under conditional use, just as other people that get a conditional use, you know, you specifically mentioned landscaping. The conditional use permit would provide that that landscaping has to be there. So, for instance, if the landscaping was a bush and the bush died, under the conditional use permit, they have to replace the bush. It can't, or they can't cut it down or anything like that. The permit basically says, this is, you have to maintain it.
And they do that now. The planning commission does that now.
I'm learning a lot.
Okay. And then, the other question, the foundation, foundational materials? We didn't discuss that in the law committee.
We started talking about foundations and frankly, that it's hard to regulate foundations. I mean, some buildings can be permanent but not have a full foundation, like a block foundation or even a slab. And some structures can be well anchored to the ground without that stuff. And so, we kind of started talking about the fact that over 200 square feet, all buildings have to go to the building department in the county anyway to get their building permit. So, if a structure's over 200 square feet, the county's going to determine whether they need a foundation or not. So, we decided for the smaller buildings under 200 square feet, we weren't going to try to dictate what was allowed or not based on what type of foundation or how it was secured to the ground. So, we kind of left that out on purpose. But if you have a comment that you think...
I guess my concern is it's going to be for something larger than that, most likely. And it would be uphill from me. And I'm already getting more drainage, and that's why I asked about the downspouts and that also, because of landscaping being taken down from a neighbor's house already. And then, if they're going to build a building and have runoff come from it, and if there's no foundation underneath it, you know, what kind of drainage issues am I going to have as a result? So, I'm being selfish. I'm kind of asking about myself.
Well, everybody does. But is something already happening that you're concerned about?
Um, well, it's kind of what triggered all this. Yeah.
Is that already under construction?
No, it's not under construction. No, but trees have been removed already.
Right now, under the existing ordinance and under this proposed ordinance, the village would not typically dictate what landscaping you can have on your property generally or what landscaping you can take down.
Right, and I understand that.
Generally take it down. I think what the mayor was talking about is, as a condition of approval, sometimes we can require certain vegetation to be either on the property line to help be a screen or, in this case, it would probably be around and right next to the accessory structure to help screen it from neighbors. And instead of seeing one giant big plain wall, which can be ugly or just not fit in well, try to break it up with something, either architectural features, windows, or landscaping, whatever's appropriate. If the village then puts that as a condition on their landscaping, part of the condition is, you have to keep that landscaping there. So, we can dictate...
Yeah, that answers that question.
If the village requires landscaping, we can dictate that it stay there. If someone just has a tree on their property that we didn't say has to be there, someone could take that down.
Right.
That'll answer that part of the question. There, we talked a little bit about drainage. We could put something in here that it should be considered, but that's, I guess I'll say it's part of the common law of Ohio and most everywhere, that a homeowner cannot put more water on their neighbor's property than what existed before. So, if as a result of doing anything on a neighbor's property, say your neighbor, if he does anything with his property, he's not allowed to put more water on your property or to make it harder for you in that sense. That's not addressed by this ordinance. It's just general common law of Ohio that that's the case. So, we did not put in additionally in this ordinance, but we could put in, if you wanted to, a sentence somewhere that if you're considering building, you should at least consider drainage as an issue, but...
I do think it's important. Especially with how, on my particular street, you know, at one end, the houses tend to tier down to the property the one direction, then you get up and over the hillside, and it goes down the other direction, so...
So then, regarding a three-season room, we address multiple accessory structures on a property in particular garages, having multiple garage, we didn't want to see a backyard full of garages.
Right.
But at three, I don't know if a three-season room is an accessory structure, but I wouldn't think it would be because it would be attached to the house.
Yeah, anything attached is not an accessory structure. So, an accessory structure is something that's detached from the main house, usually like sheds or detached garages that you think of. You have something like a three-season room, most of the time I see them off the back of a kitchen or a deck, and it's attached to the house. At least one wall is kind of part of the house, and then you have three walls that are screened in or a little bit less permanent of a wall, I guess. But usually, three-season rooms are attached to the house, one wall.
Right.
Those would not be accessible.
And I have one on my house. But I guess my concern is, is when someone decides to build, say, an accessory structure on the back of their property, somewhere on their property, and then they add a three-season room, and it's filling up that backyard even further. You know, how much space can we be filling up in a backyard and that?
Total buildings on a part of the, in other words, the total buildings on a lot is your question?
Yeah.
There is, there's an existing ordinance now and we're continuing to keep that, where you can't take out more than 50 percent of a lot with any buildings. So, including the house, anything that's attached to the house and accessory structures, can't add up to more than 50 percent. That's still a lot of buildings, but there's a limit on there of that. Typically though, we would not look at a three-season room just being attached to a house as an issue.
It was just an example.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
I would add one other thing on drainage. I'm aware of at least one instance in the last two years where someone was doing something on their property, and it was causing drainage onto the neighbor's property. And the village did get involved, and the issue was addressed, and they installed additional drainage to take the water off the property appropriately.
Okay. All right.
As I was going to say, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. I was going to, I also had a question about the drainage. Have you mentioned something about putting some language in there? But I imagine it's going to be pretty difficult because how do you measure what was before versus what has changed? Is that, but it's how does it become, how does it become onerous in new sense, et cetera?
That's, it's really difficult, frankly. You know, the owner on the downstream or downhill side is going to say, "Look at all this water. I have two inches of my basement now because of this rain where I never had it before. It's just a factual issue, case by case. Is there more water now or not? And is it caused by what the uphill owner did?" It's a kind of difficult legal issue. Frankly, neighbors sometimes end up in court over it. It's just, it happens. It's not easy. I mean, we could put something in the ordinance that, hey, if you're planning to build something, part of your plan should include how you're going to deal with drainage, just so they at least address it. But we would not be real specific as far as what they had to do. That makes sense?
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate everything the zoning commission's done and as well as the council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address the public hearing? If not, we can consider the public hearing closed at 6:51. So, now, again, we had the second reading this evening. What we would like to plan on doing is, at the next meeting, we will have the third reading, as well as considering the amendments that the, was reported on earlier by the vice mayor. So, at our February meeting, the process will be, we'll have a third reading, we'll then consider the amendments, and then we will consider the ordinance as amended or whatever. So, is that clear?
Just out of curiosity, are we going to have a law committee meeting in any time?
Well, I mean, I don't see, I did not hear anything this evening that, you know, that council, I mean, council's free to refer this to the law committee to consider, you know, whether there's changes we want to make on drainage or anything like that. So, maybe that is appropriate to at least refer it back to the law committee to have them consider any further changes, including the removal of number nine, or putting number nine back in. So...
Well, if I can interrupt you for, just regarding number nine, why it was taken out, why it's going, why the in and out of number nine? We were not in favor, ever, of having accessory structures and in garages and other buildings used as dwellings on someone's lot, in addition to their primary residence. But, so, the reason it came out was because we thought that was already taken care of in other areas of the zoning code. For example, in residence A, you can have one house on an acre, and residence B, you can have one house on a half acre. And so, put another one in the garage, you're already in violation. But if it makes it more clear, then, which I guess that they're thinking that it is more clear to put it back in, then that's why that was going to go in. I really don't think we need another law committee meeting to discuss that we want to, you know, in versus out. And personally, regarding the drainage, I mean, if, I think that's just another case of it's already covered in under Ohio law, and if it makes it more clear to put it in, it's not going to change anything either way. So, I don't feel the need for a meeting to discuss that.
I was going to say, I was going to lean toward saying we should have another meeting, both just because that was, you know, a point that may even be, it may be as simple as what you just said, but sort of given the nature of this, and maybe folks feel like we've had three readings, we'll have three readings on this, so it's a very inclusive process. But just given the amount of kind of constituent interest in this, and the nature of the change is fairly significant, to just give another opportunity for the public to potentially come. And I don't know how widely circulated these changes were prior to today and how, so, just to give folks one more chance to do it, especially if there may be some of those conversations. But I tend to agree with you that the language is probably, it may be, I was going to suggest it as sort of a formality rather than, than really, because we have significant changes.
On the other hand, it might be better to just let, recognizing that that number nine was sort of a clerical error, it might be nice to let the language be the language for a month and not have another meeting with potentially, you know, adaptations. But then, when we get to the next meeting, it's, I don't know. I have a question procedurally when we get to it.
Will there be a public hearing at the third reading?
There will not be a public hearing at the third reading.
I have one quick question about the drainage thing, too. Is there currently a requirement that if you're, like, so, current plan would not have anything, like, raid of the property and drain, like, none of that would even show up right now? The planning commission, what would, would they even understand that there could be? I'm sensitive to this issue because of just, there's some really bad stuff that's happened in the city on this, and rains are getting hard and just water issues kind of, I'm sensitive to it. So, I'm just curious if, basically what you're saying is, either at the county, county building permit level or at our planning commission level, this sort of never gets, there's state law that helps you if you want to sue your neighbor, that helps you, but there's nothing, like, there's no fact place along the way to kind of understand what the situation is? Maybe that, if was that clear?
The existing ordinance has almost no requirements as far as what you have to put on plans, if you want to come before the BZA for approval or even the administration for approval. That's one thing the BZA has said, you know, we want more information, especially for larger structures. That's why, the building permit requirement is why we made that cutoff of 200 square feet. If it's over 200 square feet, you got to go to the building department anyway and do more detailed plans to get your building permit, whatever. If it's under 200 square feet, it's small enough that, well, we don't need homeowners to go through the expense of hiring an architect or the expense to do more complicated plans. In this draft ordinance, we've said for buildings over 200 square feet, if you want to do a conditional use type permit, there are some things that you have to show, and they would be a plot plan showing property lines and dimensions, proposed structures, distances to property lines, whether, you know, what kind of foundation there would be, doesn't require a certain type of foundation, but you have to specify what it is. And it does say elevation views and grade lines. So, if you're going for a building over 200 square feet, you do have to show elevation lot lines more detailed than you would if you had a smaller building.
Okay.
We don't have any specific requirements, though, to say you can't have, you know, a certain grade of slope or percent. You know, we don't get into that much detail. We kind of leave that to the county.
But the planning commissioner or the BZA would see if it was being built, like, here. I mean, they would, they would see that, or they, or they might not.
I guess they might not. It depends on how good their plans are. It's kind of up to the BZA at that point to say, you know, your plans don't really show what we need to see. Go back to the drawing board, literally. Or maybe it's enough information for the BZA to make a decision. Hard to say without seeing an actual example of a plan. Is that good enough?
I assume, Scott, and you can answer this question. If someone comes in to build a home, we don't have anything that requires, you know, anything with affected drainage or anything like that, other than they cannot, you know, drain excess water onto a neighbor's property or anything like that. I mean, you know, there's nothing in our code that says you have to have X number of downspouts that spill into this or anything like that.
You are correct. Yes.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about it prescriptively. I'm just thinking about tools to help arm the BZA. So, that's helpful to understand.
Well, one of the things that the BZA, I mean, they wanted, they want, they want, what do we do? How do we approach this? But consistently, time after time, they want people to come in with plans, and they send them, send them back if they don't have them, and they come back again with a plan. them, send them back if they don't have them, and they come back again with a plan. And now, I would, if you changed all five members of the VZA and one felt spoofed, I mean, who knows what, what that board would do? But fortunately, that doesn't happen, and there's a lot of experience, years of experience.
Okay. You?
I have a procedural question. For the next meeting, are we going to go through section by section and vote on individual amendments? Are we going to vote, is it going to be amended in batch by the, like, you know what I'm saying?
My thought would be you would do it in batch.
Okay.
As one whole, but frankly, if you think another process is easier because this is a little bit long, that's fine, but I would anticipate doing it in one big.
But we need to, in order for it to pass, it has to have five votes. Is that correct?
The ultimate, what the process would be, we could, we could approve the changes with only four votes, but then the ultimate ordinance, since it's substantially changed from what the planning commission would require five.
This one be clear about?
And just procedurally, and I think we faced a similar situation, I think, sometime over the last few years. I mean, if we could, if you have a motion to approve it in batch, if one particular council member wanted to say, well, could we first consider excluding this particular change, and then, so then the batch would become, you could make a new motion that says, I want to consider all of the, the whole batch, but exclude this particular change, and we could approve that, and then that particular other change could be discussed individually. Anything else on this? Okay, if not, we will move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
And for those that are in attendance specifically for that item, you do not have to feel compelled to stay for the rest of the meeting. We will not be offended if you walk out.
This afternoon, the finance committee met to discuss adopting a new credit card The credit card policy is, has been introduced by the House, the Ohio Legislature in House Bill Number 312, regulating the use of credit card, credit and debit cards by municipalities. Several years ago, Amberly Village did adopt a credit card policy in response to a recommendation from the state auditor following an audit. However, this now puts our policy into writing to be in conjunction with the House Bill 312, which is mandated by the Ohio Legislature. Accordingly, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-1, a policy adopting the use of credit cards.
Second.
Okay, it is, we moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-1, adopting a policy for the use of credit cards. Is there any discussion or questions related? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The second item is an adjustment to 2019 appropriations. The appropriations were passed last month in our council meeting. However, one of the checks which was part of the appropriation was cashed the day after our meeting, so as a result, we have to reappropriate the appropriations. Accordingly, I would like to move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1, ordinance amending appropriations for the fiscal year of 2019.
Second.
Okay, it is, we moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2019-1, amending 2019 appropriations. And for those in attendance, this relates to a very small amount of money, relates to unclaimed monies, so somebody that basically had not cashed a check, but then subsequently did cash a check. So it's a very small amendment. Are there any questions related to that? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2019-1. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. That concludes my report. Thank you. Okay, well, now we'll move on to the streets and public utilities and stewardess committee.
Thank you. I believe I mentioned this at last council meeting, while we talking about in terms of the proposed rate schedule increase for CT consultants. Back in November, the streets public utility steward committee met and received information that CT consultants is going to be proposing a rate increase for their services to the village. As many of you know, CT consultants originally in the form of CDS and Associates, has been the village engineer for over 20 years, almost 30 years, I imagine. And so, they provided the village with several professional engineering services, such as in the area of stormwater, street infrastructure improvements, architecture structure, acquiring grant funding for some of the public works that we have. Thinking about the Village Green Dam, the work they did there. So anyway, so they've, they've come and proposed a rate increase for 2019, and the rate increase, depending on the type of service that's being used, will range from 2.4, about 2.4% to 3%. This is, I believe, the second year now that they have proposed a rate increase. For a few years, basically, the rates were essentially flat, and so this is probably in response to the type of work that's being, work that's being proposed by a variety of communities in the area, in terms of supply and demand and things along that line. So what we have before you is Resolution 2019-2, approving the amended CT consultant's fee schedule.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2019-2, authorizing the village manager to enter into new service rate schedule with our village engineer. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And that concludes the streets report?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now move on to the land development committee and its chair of the land development committee. The land development committee last met in December, and the purpose of the meeting was to consider and to discuss with the Jewish Community Center their current proposal with respect to what they would like to do at Amberly Green. As council is aware, this is something we've been working with the Jewish Community Center for almost two years now, to look at whether it makes sense from the Jewish Community Center's perspective and from the village's perspective, to consider doing something with the Jewish Community Center at Amberly Green. The meeting in December did involve some big, not big changes, but some changes in there, in what their plans for the, what they would like to do on the property. As council is aware, they had talked to us over the past year about the possibility of utilizing the clubhouse and spending substantial money at the clubhouse and refurbishing that into an event center. They have now concluded that that does not make sense, and so what they have done is revised their plans to basically, and those plans were included, or a picture of their plans was included, what, what they now would like to do is change the placement of the things that they would like to have on the property, which is still pretty much the same as what they were talking all along, other than the event center. It still will involve the construction of a, two new outdoor pools up there, as well as an amphitheater and some other facilities for summer camp for children. But, you know, the plans, as they presented them, I think the land development committee felt that it definitely made it look much more park-like than even the earlier proposals, so, you know, it had a very good feel to it. The placement of their items were, was changed slightly, but the land development committee recommended to council to endorse this plan with four conditions. And the conditions were that we would need to proceed to continue to work up the agreements with the Jewish Community Center, so there's a lot of detailed work still to do. We need to work internally to determine what we're going to do with respect to zoning on the property. The third was that we would meet, and it would probably involve multiple meetings, with residents to get input on their plans, be it, you know, placement of things or different things that they may want to do with the property. And then the one thing I do want to add for residents is, you know, these park-like features, you know, they, they would like to build a multipurpose field and things like that. For Amberly residents, other than the period when they're being utilized for the summer camp facilities, these facilities would be available to Amberly residents. And that includes that they would, their intent is, for instance, the current cart paths that would be on the, within the 25 acres that they're talking about, they would refurbish those cart paths, and for Amberly residents, other than during that period, during summer camp hours, those would be available for Amberly residents to continue utilizing those and walking the property. And the other thing I would want to mention, one of the things that the land development committee and the earlier proposals from the Jewish Community Center, the fact that the clubhouse as it exists right now is in essence a liability to the village because of its condition and so forth. And so, the fact that the Jewish Community Center was considering refurbishing the clubhouse, you know, had that benefit. The one, what the Jewish Community Center has said to us is now that they, they do not plan on utilizing it, they would pay for the cost to demolish the clubhouse. So again, the big benefit to the village of no longer facing that liability is still there. So we would, we will meet with residents to get input. And then the fourth condition was to make sure that we have property access correct. And the Jewish Community Center's plan had the access to the property, coming into the property from the street across, what's his name?
Fairhaven.
Fairhaven across the way, coming on to the property. But also, we want to make sure that we have property access right for pedestrians. So, you know, this is something we've been, we received a grant, I think, four or five months ago from the county to look at pedestrian access into the property, and we've been doing some engineering work, as well as looking at some other access to the property for vehicles. So we want to, just want to make sure that we have this correct. So, you know, what the land development committee basically said was, you know, there's still a lot of work to do, both on the part of the Jewish Community Center, as well as Amberly Village, to really determine that this is something we want to do. But the land development committee, as I said, recommend, recommended to council that we continue to proceed with this, and in fact, endorse the plan as presented. So I would hereby like to make a motion that the council certainly endorse the Jewish Community Center's plan with the same conditions that I mentioned, and that we continue over the next four to six months to get to the next stage as to whether we can in fact move forward. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the council endorsed the Jewish Community Center's plans for the use of the, or the building at Amberly Green with the conditions that I mentioned.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor. I think that was very well done. I may reiterate a couple of the things you said, just to clarify a couple of things that I've heard. So first of all, one of the things, just to note about the way the plan is different that I thought was very notable, was as a result of removing the building according to their plan, they, they did indicate in that meeting, which I think is very important for people who use the property, that they plan to put up a structure that would have bathrooms that would be available for everybody all the time, which would be, that's a huge deal for utilization of that property for, you know, people who are going to the community garden, or people who just want to walk around, to be able to have bathroom availability on that property. So I wanted to mention that piece. Again, I just want to reiterate a couple of things that the mayor said, and just clarify a couple of things, because I've seen some misinformation, even seeing it on an agenda like this, seeing it, I've seen things on social media, oh, that Amberly is proceeding with selling the green to the J. That's not what's happening. We're not selling the green to the J. That's not what we're voting on today. And so I just want to be really, really clear that people understand that that's not what we're doing today, and that this is not the public hearing, this is not kind of like, this is not it for community engagement, and the mayor mentioned that. But that is something that, you know, I certainly have said in every land development committee meeting, the mayor has said it in every land development committee meeting, we're very committed to making sure that this has a lot of community input in it, and we are doing that. And as the mayor also mentioned, we are, you know, continuing our own due diligence, both with respect to the things you mentioned for their plan, but also, this isn't the end for the green either. And we're kind of, you know, doing this in stages, and this is a great kind of first step toward these park assets for our community, and then, and then there's additional conversations to have as part of the community. So I wanted to clarify a couple of those, those pieces. But I think it was the land development committee meeting, I think the J really tried to listen to the comments that they heard from the first round of community input and council input, and so it was very productive, and I look forward to continuing to work with them on this.
I think it's very, it is very exciting, the new, the newer proposal. In terms of process, I would not rise to the level of making this a fifth condition, but I feel, I would like to request and recommend that other council committees be engaged around our assessment of the, of the project and its components, different components aligned with different council committees around, you know, the economics of it, the public uses of, of different amenities that may or may not go there. Just a simple example, that the community garden would need to be relocated. I just, I feel strongly about that, so I just wanted to mention it. But I am extremely supportive of the project and grateful for all the work that has been done to date.
Heather?
Yeah, I was at the land development committee meeting, and I certainly thank all the members of the committee for their diligence and their hard work to, and working with the J to really get it to this place. I did share a couple of concerns that I think can be addressed, but it's just something that we need to be aware of. Going into this, I believe many of us thought that there might be revenue generation from the J's development, that there's revenue generation for the village, and that would probably come through the clubhouse, or whatever the clubhouse would become, an event center, things like that. Well, that's no longer going to happen. So the type of revenue that we can expect to get from this is really going to be minimal. So that's the quantitative piece, but there's certainly qualitative value that I think we need to kind of assess over the next several months in terms of, you know, how do we, how do we define these benefits to the village resident? That is, having this, will it improve our property values, for example? So I think we need to try and figure some of this out over the next several, over the next several months. And there's also going to be a cost to the village. So for example, I think, Tommy, you didn't mention this, but I think this is something that maybe can be negotiated, but having the pool, having the J build an outdoor pool there, right now, the J is expecting the village to contribute about $50,000 a year toward maintenance costs of the pool. So in return for that, that's my understanding, correct me if I'm mistaken, but in return for that, the J wants to give... for that, the J wants to give the village homeowners several passes to use the facility during its time of operation during the summer months. So it's almost like you may have a, those who are not members of the J, you might have basically the, almost the equivalent of like a country club or something. Again, that's a value that we, that village residents get in return. So I just think we need to, as, the next few months, we just need to sort out, you know, this value equation and make sure that, you know, we're all understanding in terms of what this is all about, in terms of qualitative, quantitative value of the village residents.
And just one thing I do want to mention, with respect to the revenues, I mean, Jewish Community Center, right from the beginning, has, has said to us, there will be additional revenues to the village from the standpoint of additional camp staff, because the camp, as well as additional jobs that, because what they will do down at the existing Jewish Community Center is to expand their offerings to their members down there and do some other things, which definitely created additional jobs. And I think it was in the order of revenue to the village was 15 to 20,000 dollars.
Well, I mean, that's great. I mean, I just think we need to get, to enable us to fully understand what we're, you know, signing on for, you know, just to get an idea about this.
Which is, you know, I think that's right.
I just want to say that I'm really glad that we're moving forward, and I completely agree with you, Ray, about the qualitative value cannot be understated. But really, I want, what I want to do is acknowledge our terrific maintenance staff because there is a bathroom at Amberly Green, and I have used it many, many times. It's in the parking lot. It is a double-wide, handicap-accessible porta potty, which always is clean, always is well-stocked with toilet paper, and hand sanitizer, and a working lock. And if you are somebody who has run, in her, has run 30 miles a week at times and stopped at that porta potty, thank you, thank you. It would, you know, an upgrade is great, but that one is one of the nicest ones around.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we endorse the plan with respect to the Jewish Community Center's expansion on, down at the Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They've noted that the motion is passed unanimously. And that concludes the land development committee report. We'll now move on to the managers.
Thank you, Mayor. I had three items I wanted to mention in regards to leaf collection. We obviously finished up leaf collection, it did spill into 2019, so we finished up last Tuesday with leaf collection. This happened to be a banner year for leaf collection, over 5,000 cubic yards of leaves were collected. The last time that we collected that number of leaves was in 2009, so it was a record season for, for some reason. Second item, kudos to our maintenance department for the excellent snow and ice control over the weekend. We heard a lot of compliments from, from residents. I thought the maintenance department did an excellent job with handling the, the volume of snow that we received Saturday and Sunday. And then the last item, the council calendar for 2019 has been circulated. There, we gave you the dates of the scheduled council meetings and any potential conflicts, and if we're good with the...
Well, yeah, I gotta check with Councilman Warren. The June 10th scheduled date is the last night of Shabbat. Sorry, excuse me. So we need to move that date. So would Wednesday, the 12th work for everyone? So we'll move...
It doesn't work for me.
Okay.
Sorry.
How about the Thursday, the 13th?
That's good.
I guess. Oh, no, I can't, actually. I...
How about Tuesday, the 11th? Okay. So how about Monday, the 17th?
We'll have a proclamation.
So Monday, the 17th? Okay, so Monday, the 17th, and then October 14th is the first night of Sabbath.
Sepulchre.
Sepulchre. I should have done this.
I'm in here too.
Yes. So, as I understand it, the first two nights and the last two nights are nights that we should avoid. So how about Wednesday, the 16th? Okay, so the October meeting will be October 16th. And all other dates appear to be okay. Okay. I would, I would hereby like to make a motion that the regularly scheduled June 10th meeting for council be moved to June 17th, and that the regularly scheduled October 14th meeting be moved to October 16th. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend our meeting schedule, and our June meeting will be June 17th, and our October meeting will be October 16th. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that the June meeting will be June 17th, and the October meeting will be October 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They've noted that the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Then the last item under the manager's report is Ordinance 2019-2, adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances. This is the codification that...
It's actually 2019-3.
Thank you. 2019-3. This is actually the recodification of the Village Code.
Maybe not. I could be wrong. I apologize. It says three on the agenda, though. The agenda says three, but the packet said number two. Oh, I'm looking at Tom's. I'm sorry. Sorry. Read it wrong.
Okay. It's an annual codification, and it captures the, the activity that council has taken over this, over this past year, up to about half of 2018. It also captures any changes to the Ohio Revised Code through August of 2018. This is a bit of a redundant exercise, but it is a process where we go through, and American Legal takes all that action, that legislation, and puts it into our code books and makes that available online to us. This cost us just slightly less than $6,000 this year, so it's necessary for council to pass a motion to waive the three readings if you so desire, and then a motion to approve the...
I will move that we waive the three readings for Ordinance 2019-2 to adopt and enact a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive three readings with respect to Ordinance 2019-2, adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2019-2. Please call the roll.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
Ed, Edna? Lady Kine? Yes. Tom, you think? Yes. Ray Warren? 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 Yes. And that now concludes...
I can use my report. Yes, thank you.
Are there any questions for the managers? Okay, well now move on to the chief.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of comments about the unfortunate incident in the funeral today of Colrain Officer Dale Woods. Been a very trying week for law enforcement, and difficult for brotherhood throughout the county and the state, really. But just to let the council know that we, we had some involvement as far as being able to assist Colrain Township. As part of a mutual aid request, we did send several officers over to work some shifts over there during the week. Also during the week, weekend, several officers attended various services that were held Saturday, Sunday. And then today, we actually had six, at least six officers in four units respond and, in the, be in the funeral and the procession today. Along with that, I'm sure you saw on the news how important that the Shield was with assistance to the family and recognizing Chief Os is very, very involved with the Shield, along with Chief Snow from Redding and Chief Hines from Merrimott, very involved with the family all week, as well as Rabbi Mendy, who is our chaplain here. So I just wanted to recognize and let council know that our department was very involved in assistance and, although very miniscule in scope of things, but through mutual aid, there was a lot of involvement from our department, as well as a number of departments throughout the county that, that were able to provide assistance.
Any questions for lieutenant? Thank you. We'll now move on to the mayor's report, and as, as council's aware, at our December meeting, we completed our review process with the village manager and approved his evaluation for 2018. Before you tonight is Ordinance 2019-3, which authorizes an addendum to the village manager's employment agreement, which provides for a 2% increase in his annual compensation, as well as a 2,000, a one-time $2,000 annual bonus. So I hereby like to move that we approve Ordinance 2019-3, authorizing the addendum to the village manager's employment contract.
I apologize.
One, one, I know what you're going to say. Before I make the motion to approve it, I would hereby like to move to waive the three readings, is that what you were going to say?
Yes.
I hereby move that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2019-3.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2019-3. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2019-3. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Lady Kine? Yes. Tom, you think? Yes. Ray Warren? 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 Yes. I would now like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2019-3, authorizing an addendum, addendum to the village manager's employment contract. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance 2019-3, authorizing the addendum to the village manager's contract. Are there any questions or comments?
We had his, we did a performance review of the village manager prior to doing the Sal reaction, which of course we did in executive session, but I think it's important to say that we all think he does a great job, and we gave him a great review for another year. We're very grateful for all of his efforts on behalf of Amberly.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2019-3. Please call the roll.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
Ed, Edna? Lady Kine? Yes. Tom, you think? Yes. Ray Warren? Yes. And then I would like to make a motion that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, and it shall go into effect forthwith. And the reason for this is the, we would like to make this effective for the 1st of January, because that's when his contract is, and so we would like it to go into effect immediately. So it's hereby moved that we adopt this emergency measure. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2019-3 as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2019-3 as an emergency measure which will allow it to go into immediate effect. Please call the roll. Hey, Tom.
Yes.
Ed, Edna? Yes. Lady Kine? Yes. Tom, you think? Yes. Ray Warren? Yes. Tom, you think? Yes. Ray Warren? Yes. And then the only other thing I have for the mayor's report is that the Environmental Spiritship Committee's first meeting of 2019 will occur two weeks from this evening, down in the community room at 7:00 PM. And I know one item on the agenda will be planning for this year's one-stop drop, which is our annual recycling. And with that, that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions or comments? Any new business?
This Wednesday, January 16th, at 6 o'clock, there will be a initial convening of a We Thrive Working Group Committee, or Committee, that's going to be working through the chronic disease pathway. We have worked with We Thrive before, and We Thrive is an initiative of Hamilton County Public Health, which strives to create healthier communities, healthier places to live, work, and play. And by the, this is achieved through, I think it's seven pathways now? They keep expanding, they're different, they're called, they're called pathways, and they're structured methods of achieving policymaking goals for communities. So the one we're working on currently is called Chronic Disease. It encompasses many things, from anti-smoking measures to increase activities, activity opportunities, to fresh air and the environment. It's very wide-ranging, and we hope that this group will kind of help us forge a path forward to make Amberly, as usual, a happy place to live, work, and play.
Just a quick event plug. There aren't so many events in Amberly, so when, just wanted to mention, on January 27th, which is a Sunday, Wise Temple has their annual chicken soup cook-off, which is an open-to-the-public event. It's a fundraiser for their brotherhood, but they, it's apparently their 15th annual, and they have different categories, and you can, it's a competition, different chicken soup tasting, which is a fun January thing to do. And it is from 12:15 to 2:15 on January 27th, so just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and also has a lot of traffic on Ridge Road, so that's like, good to know.
I wanted to ask Kevin if the municipality group around the pipeline is going to be reactivating in any way. That was not pleasant news for the beginning of the new year, but...
Yeah, I think, actually, this Friday, I think, is the first one that we really are counting on to talk about it again.
This coming Friday?
Yeah.
And I do think the city is planning to conven municipal leaders again as well.
Any other new business? Not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.